Sorry, seems like seven o'clock. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Kalamazoo City Planning Commission, Thursday, May 1st, 2025. Can I get a roll call?
Adept Bowman, here. Curtis?
Here.
De Senzo?
Here.
Koscheva? Patelko?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Swan?
Here.
Tolber?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Excellent. Full group, love it. All right, we've got an agenda that includes one public hearing. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes this evening.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Support, thank you, motion adopted and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And we have minutes from the last April 9th meeting, which do say I was put as the chair. So, but that'll stand. So unless anybody has any changes to the minutes, any suggestions? All right, can we get a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in support?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Any communications or announcements?
There are none this evening.
All right. In that case, we can move on to the public hearing. Consider rezoning request from Bogan Development, rezone 802, 814, 822, and 824 South Berdick, 104 and 115 West Vine, from Livework 1 to Downtown.
Before we get started, I need to abstain, as I'm an employee of.
All right.
I also need to abstain, serving on a board with Jamari.
All right, all right. But I think that we still should have enough quorum for voting. So we can proceed with the report.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Plan Commission Request 2025.01. It's a little crazy that we're in May and this is our first applicant case. This is a request from Bogan Development to change the zoning of 802 South Berdick, 814 South Berdick, 822 South Berdick, 824 South Berdick, 107 West Vine, and 115 West Vine, from Livework 1 to Downtown 3. So the properties are noted in the green, they're at the corner of Vine and Berdick. The request again is moving from Livework 1 to Downtown 3, D3. These districts are very, well, they're identical in terms of the permitted uses and the permitted lot types. Both of these districts are within our Form-Based Code, and so that means they have facade requirements. There are limited driveway placement, thinking about a build-to zone, which is, instead of the traditional setback, you shall put your building behind it. It's a more exact, like it must be within this range. And Livework 1 and D3 operate the same in those form standards. The key differences with these two districts, if you would approve it tonight, is that D3 permits a building up to five stories, where Livework 1 only permits a building up to three stories. And there's a difference in the impervious coverage, or the surface coverage. And that percentage is the ratio of the properties that are covered with asphalt or buildings, so things where water cannot percolate through. And so it is 80% in Livework 1 and 100% in Downtown 3. All of the downtown districts are nearly 100% because of the generally small size of the lot and the intensity of those lots and how they're developed, or covered at least. So that's a typical downtown requirement. So when you think about the area, what you have in front of you right now is the zoning map. You can see D3 exists only on the east side of Berdick Street. It covers the hospital properties. The west side of Berdick Street is Livework 1, as well as some properties on the east side as well. It kind of goes back and forth. This is an area of transition. It's a unique area with the downtown, with the hospital and the Vine neighborhood. And on the other side is the Edison neighborhood, as you get further to the east. I will also note, although it's not on here, both Vine and Berdick Street are noted on our street type map. If you remember, those, a lot of our zoning standards are tied to the type of street that the building is being located on. Berdick in this location is a neighborhood business street, and it does go back and forth. It has a lot of different uses on it, residential, commercial, and civic. And Vine to the west of Berdick is a neighborhood network street. So it's a street that tends to go through the center and edges of neighborhoods, that like Vine does. This map is the illustration from the future land use plan. You'll note that there are two shades of purple on this map. On the east side of Berdick Street is Urban Edge, and on the west side is Neighborhood Edge. These two both represent mixed-use districts. They are meant to promote activity, walkability, housing, and commercial, all mixed up together. It doesn't have to be ground floor commercial, it could be ground floor residential. The next lot over could be commercial, or it could be the traditional mixed use that we think of where it's commercial on the ground floor and residential above. As I said before, this is an area of transition. And when we receive zoning requests, and since the future land use plan was developed back in 2017, we have received maybe a handful of zoning changes that are on the edge of the future, between two future land use designated districts. Typically, what we talk about is that, you know, the future land use plan is about 10,000 feet up, right? It's the master plan, it's a citywide document, and the future land use plan was also created thinking citywide. It's our zoning code that we really look at on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And so it is not uncommon to have to think about edges where we might push or pull the future land use designation in one way or the other. In this case, both of these districts are promoting the same types of uses, the same type of activities, and very similar building forms. Urban Edge assumes a slightly more intense density, you know, like a taller building. So that's the, kind of the difference. Rezonings must follow our public participation policy, which means that there was some outreach that the applicant had to do. Some cases that you see in front of you, it's not required, it's recommended for rezonings. It is required. Last evening, in conjunction with the Vine Neighborhood Association, a meeting was held to give anyone who was interested the opportunity to review the plans, ask questions of the development team. Here are some details from the social media post. And so it was advertised through social media and through the Neighborhood Association. And just for context, this is the corner of Berdick and Vine looking south. So there's just a single-story commercial building, which definitely doesn't meet kind of the vision, ultimate vision of this area, as both in the master plan, as well as, you know, how it's zoned currently or potentially. This is the view looking Berdick across Vine to the north. The building on the corner, you can't see the top of it. It is a residential building with multiple units in it. It is a tall residential building. It is easily three stories with a tall eve on top of that, so three plus. Across the street is Bronson Hospital. This is the parking garage. Depending on where you look at the parking garage, because of grade, it looks at different heights. It appears three stories from this corner. And this is the view down Vine to the east. And these are some houses that would be included in this development ultimately. So whenever we review a rezoning request, the Plan Commission reviews them based on the review criteria as laid out in our zoning code and by the enabling legislation from the state. And the first review criteria is, you know, the importance of being consistent with the master plan and the strategic vision. So as I've said, the master plan and the strategic vision support these blocks being active, mixed-use, walkable, supported development, or multimodal development blocks. This is just south of downtown and adjacent to a major employer. So this, if it's right, that this type of development would fit in with the character, or this district, excuse me. Is there a change in conditions that warrants this zoning change? We definitely have a demonstrated need for housing in Kalamazoo, especially adjacent to a major employer like Bronson University and near downtown. We have numbers that have been released since we updated the zoning code, or at least this area of the zoning code, for county need for a number of units, which we at the city are able to extrapolate for what we need. And I believe there are just under 2,200 units that need to come to the city to meet expected demand between now and 2030. We also are in a space where construction these, right now, is very challenging. There are a lot of external forces at play that make projects difficult to pencil, meaning that the pro forma, the ability to pay for the project to get it done and maintain it is hard to do. So we're living in a different place today than we were even a few months ago. Demonstrated community need is the third criteria. The demonstrated community need in this case, again, is the need for more housing in this location adjacent to downtown. The current development, that single-use commercial building that's setback behind the parking lot, is not what is projected for this area. And so this certainly, any development that would happen in Livework 1 or D3 would be more appropriate. Is it compatible with existing, with surrounding land uses? So again, D3, Downtown 3, and Livework 1 have the same list of permitted uses. So in that case, the change in zoning would be as compatible as what exists today, if you're looking at use. If you're looking at building form from a pedestrian, or one driving down the street, biking down the street, on a bus, generally what your visibility range is, is the first floor, second floor, maybe the third floor. After that, it's kind of out of your field of view, just scale-wise. Same lot types and the same design for those areas. So though D3 allows for a taller building, it's generally from the pedestrian scale out of one's relatable view shed. Finally, would rezoning this property to D3 result in logical orderly development? Yes, it has very similar standards outside of the height to what the parcel would allow right now by right. So it will continue to be logical and orderly if it's rezoned and developed that way. Before I turn it over to the applicants, do you have any technical questions for me?
Yes. Are all the parcels proposed to be rezoned owned by the applicant at this point in time?
They are either all owned, or the applicant has permission to be bringing them forward today.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm sorry, maybe in the map, it looks like there's some that are scheduled to be rezoned, but then the rendering I'm seeing includes more parcels on the far side.
Sure, so only the properties that I listed that are hatched in this drawing are in the rezoning request. I'll let the developers talk about, you know, anything beyond the scope of this rezoning request. I know that they're thinking about something more broadly in the block, but that is not what we are here for tonight, it is these parcels. I do believe their original request included more parcels than this. And then there were more custom conversations that were had between city staff and the development team, and that was adjusted. And I think some of that information was included in your packet. But these parcels at the corner are the only ones included in the request. It's six parcels, four on Berdick, two with a Vine address.
And just for clarification, in some spots, it's PC 2025.01 and .02?
Yes.
Can you clarify that? Thanks.
I will clarify, doing a quick search back on cases. I don't know that you've had a case yet this year. I will look. But I'll verify that, thank you.
And then.
For that catch.
To clarify, the difference in zoning between Livework 1 and Downtown 3 is just the height and the impervious service coverage. There are no other differences regulations-wise between the two, no differences in.
The uses are all the same, the lot types are the same. They are very similar. Impervious coverage and height are the primary differences. Any other questions for me? Okay. I am going to invite the applicant up to give a presentation. Hold on one second. I just want to be able to have this screen be shown, since it's not in a PowerPoint. Let me see how I do this. There we go. Give me one second, let's see. Oh, Beth, can you help me make this my screen appear up there? Maybe? It's a little fuzzy. Just not letting me show the images. Okay, well, you might not be able to have them, because they're not showing up up there. But you can look at them on here if you want to talk about them. There you go.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jamari Bogan, I am the CEO of Bogan Developments and the developer for the B on Berdick. This project is a mixed-use development that will revitalize a critical corner in our Vine neighborhood by replacing a longstanding liquor store, food max, and several bided structures with workforce housing for our local employer base, an early learning center serving 40 to 50 students, and neighborhood-serving amenities. The B on Berdick directly aligns with the majored Kalamazoo 2025's vision and the Vine neighborhood's plan by introducing affordable housing options, attracting new businesses, and enhancing connectivity within the broader Kalamazoo community. Currently, the site is, of course, is Zoned Livework 1, which does not permit us to go five stories in height. However, it's important to note that the original vision for this parcel developed in collaboration with Bronson Healthcare, the city of Kalamazoo, the Vine and Vine Edison neighborhood, and LISC always imagined a five-story building at this corner. And I consider ourselves the flag bearer of this one to get it done. We recently received approval from the Historic District Commission for the demolition of several properties along West Vine Street. And just this past Tuesday, as mentioned by Christina, we had an elite community charrette at the Vine Neighborhood Association, where we received valuable feedback from neighbors, the Vine neighborhood, and the broader community to ensure our plan reflects the Vine neighborhood plan and the shared vision of our community. Our development team includes Kalamazoo Forward Ventures, Bronson, AVB, Tower Pinkster, and Hurley and Stewart. Our strong local partnership was created to create an impactful development. To bring this shared vision to life, we respectfully request your support in rezoning the site to Downtown D3. I thank you, and if you guys have any questions, we're here to answer them. But we're here to truly make an impact on this area and this community. We're not transactional, we're relational. So we're here for a long time, and we just want to be good neighbors and good stewardors of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you have a timeline for when you want to stand up those 80 units?
Yes, great question. We're on a accelerated timeline. I would say optimistically, we'll be in the ground sometime next year.
And do you have a definition, or what are the features of that learning center?
Say that one more time for me.
Do you have a more stringent definition of what you mean by learning center? What does that look like?
Yeah, so on my first project I developed called Zone 32, we partnered with the YMCA of Greater Kalamazoo, and we built the Early Learning Center for 27 kids. And I'm really proud of that, because 94% of those kids in the neighborhood are kindergarten-ready when they leave out of there. So I just think it's good, you know, as we develop elite housing, that we provide elite affordable childcare with it.
And how did the, how did the community feedback meeting go? Did you get mostly positive, did you get any negative you want to talk about? Or do you have any, how, did you have any concerns from the neighbors you wanted to address?
I thought the community feedback went great. I think whenever you're presenting something new, there's always curiosity to what it's going to bring, the effects. But I think the essence of what we're bringing, which is affordable housing, childcare, and amenities, I think everyone's excited about. And I've connected with neighbors who were there in the neighborhood prior, and folks who live there now. And I think this vision has been talked about for seven years, and finally it's coming to fruition for everyone. But I think there will be questions, and we'll be here to answer them. Once again, we're not transactional or relational, so we'll be here to be a part of the neighborhood.
This is a little bit in the weeds, but in the proposed design of the development, the reason that you would be looking for a change to the downtown district, would that be strictly for the height, or is also the increased impervious surface also necessary for the project as it's designed right now?
I'll introduce myself. Good evening, Jason Novatny with Tower Pinkster. Thanks for having me here, so I can help with some of the technical aspects. We'll be under the 80% number, so we won't be anywhere close to the 100% number. Part of that actually will be playground surface, which will be adjacent to the preschool, but we're planning on some green space amenities for the residents as well. As far as the ground floor, I understand it's going to be retail and commercial. Do you have an idea of how many individual, like, I guess, units there will be for commercial businesses? Like, how many, theoretically, how many businesses could you foresee occupying this commercial ground floor?
As conceptually designed right now, we have three uses.
The application mentions mixed income housing units. Is that something that's going to be specifically maintained, like, via applications, like specifically spelt out via rules? Or is that something you plan to be, like, come along naturally?
Great question. Yeah, and so the program that we're using is a state program around housing for employers. And, you know, that will have specifications that allow us to, that specify that we have to maintain a level of affordability for a certain amount of time. Similar to my project in the north side, we have a 10-year from Mishna, and then we have another 30 years from the city, and another 20 years from the county. So this is just typically, if you build affordable housing, you're getting resources from the community. That's usually mandated, and you got to make sure you get that done.
Is that for a certain number of units, or all of the 80?
Elite question, another one. So we haven't, we have, our performer is still conceptual, but I would say the heart of our project, it's going to be in the lion's share.
Any other questions?
With a proposed five-story structure, would you be then anticipating, like, one or two units per story? Or, I guess, hearing three commercial units, eight residential units? I'm trying to figure out how that requires five stories over three, where that, part of that design came along.
Yeah, so to be efficient with the site, right? Five stories was needed for this development. And again, it aligned with the vision of our community, our neighborhood associations, and the city of Kalamazoo. But the first floor will be ground-level commercial, so it's going to be fully commercial. And then the other four stories are going to be residential.
Sorry, just, you said it was 80, 80 residential units?
That's correct. It's approximately 80 units.
Okay.
I know we're not here to critique or comment upon design elements, but I would like to share a little bit more just about the intentionality of the height variance request. So as Christina mentioned, the primary street that we're fronting onto is Berdick. That's our, that's our main neighborhood street that we're focused on. And so that area would be five stories. But we want to be cognizant of the neighborhood scale, and as we step west into Vine, our intention with the design is to go from a five-story building down to a three-story building. So halfway through the block, if you happen to have our L-shaped plan in front of you, the west-facing side of that L, as designed right now, is going from five stories to three stories. So I want you to know that we are thinking about the neighborhood scale and what's an appropriate scale to mesh up with what the housing is. We won't be abutting any housing with the development of the five-story piece as designed.
That's stepped down to three stories, that's where it says preschool, 3,000 to 4,000 square foot? Perfect, thank you.
That's correct.
Okay, and I guess, does that answer the question about why we're looking at a larger, a larger plot than the rezoning request?
On the. This, this might get into some technicalities too, but there's the plot that we're not requesting a rezoning for, which is immediately to the west, which is, it's an older office building where MRC used to be. It's kind of setback. That's RM 36, and if we were RM 36, we could go six stories. So it's kind of an odd moment of what's to the left of us allows six. We're allowed three because of the Form-Based Code, Livework 1. So just, we don't need to do that one, nor would we be wanting to build that tall on that site.
That would be the 119 West Vine Street, correct?
I don't know the.
That's not marked on our map, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right spot.
Immediately to the west of what's being requested. I have another question regarding the number of, like, bedrooms per unit. Like, are you going to have a range from studio to two? Are you going to do mostly one to two? Like, what's the plan for that?
There would be a large, majority of our units will be ones, studios, and then there will be some two bedrooms.
Can you talk a little bit more about any future plans you have for community and neighborhood engagement? I know you mentioned you're relational and not transactional. And so as you probably know, we got a couple of letters from neighbors, and I'm just wondering, most of the letters are just asking for ongoing engagement, what your plans are for that.
So in that thinking, thanks, Michelle, for that. When we have team meetings, we have six guiding principles. One of our guiding principles is community engagement. So this is not something, again, that we're doing because the city has specified us to do it. It is what's a part of the project and our projects that we do. Community engagement is a part of it. I did speak with Karen, I think she's here, about that, and we will have ongoing conversations with her and the neighborhood, and the neighborhood at large, and the community at large. One of our partners is Kalamazoo Forward Ventures, and the, one of the gentlemen is a former mayor. So community engagement is always our strategy. So we're going to make sure that we connect, we lean into it, and we make sure that this project doesn't overwhelm people, but people feel good about it, because it is a good thing for our community.
All right, any other questions from the group? No? All right. Are we ready for the public comment? All right. So now we'll open up the floor for public comment. We'll also take calls at 888-382-9556. But first, we would like to hear from anyone who's, who's here who wants to make a comment. Please step up, sign your name, address, and feel free to talk until the timer expires, or less. Great. Welcome.
All my time.
I'm not telling Greg, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I heard you.
I'm saying he has choices.
Hi, everybody. Greg Milliken, 2424 Sheffield Drive. Happy to be here. I just want to give a little background on how this came to be, and maybe that might help with a little bit of some of the questions and other things you might have in your mind. other things you might have in your mind. This project evolved from the Bronson Healthy Living District, which was a, um, a compilation or a work of KVCC and Bronson nearly ten years ago. So with, from the investment of those groups that formed and created the Allied Health Center and the Food Innovation Center, we created the Healthy Living Campus Plan, uh, trying to figure out how we can leverage that investment and create other improvements in the area. We identified this block for potential residential development. Why this block? Well, there was a lot of blight there. There was a lot of, um, empty parcels, a lot of parcels that were owned by the same owner, so, um, acquisition would be fairly easy. And then, over time, we just started opportunistically acquiring property. At the same time, we started some visioning and planning effort, very quietly, obviously, but we, um, gathered together, um, the Vine Neighborhood Association, Edison Neighborhood Association, KNHS, LISC, City of Kalamazoo, KVCC ourselves, and we just started visioning. And we said, let's not be confined by ownership or cost, zoning, infrastructure, anything. What would we like to see here? And our vision was a patchwork of missing middle housing, because we need housing and we need an opportunity to see what different types look like, so that when people, acquiring this much land is going to be hard in the corner neighborhoods. So when folks get three lots, they can look here as a demonstration of what a quadplex might look like, or a row house may look like. And we wanted to be that sort of patchwork, because that's what the Vine neighborhood is. It's a patchwork of different housing styles and types fit together. And, but it would have to taper down, so it fit within the fabric of the community. So we looked at Burdick, and we wanted that to be the most intense area, right? And at that time, five stories was, was within the zoning at that time. So we looked at five stories on Burdick Street tapering down to row houses, smaller type cottage-style development along Rose Street, and that's the plan. And in your packet, you get, you have a copy of our guiding principles that were developed out of that and refined over the preceding, you know, COVID kind of was a bit of a bump in the road, but then, um, came from there. And so we were happy to partner with, uh, Kalamazoo Forward Ventures and, uh, and to begin to see this come to fruition. So, thanks for your attention to this.
Thank you. Any other members? Um, any other folks from the, uh, audience who'd like to make a comment? If you would, again, like to step up, um, state your name and address, sign in, and let us know. Let us know how you think.
Karen Williams, and Jesse and I submitted the letter, so I won't go into great detail, but just really wanted to thank everyone for doing the due diligence to make sure the minimum zoning is passed to see the true vision of the project come through. Uh, my main concern being a house on Rose Street is just how, how close to our property the downtown zone is going to be. And I know there's a lot of talk and intention about making it still, you know, very livable on the residential side where it isn't downtown yet, but I want to thank you for doing your due diligence to make sure that our needs are being considered there. Um, and also just wanted to encourage us to stretch the idea of what it means to have outreach. Uh, from the perspective of somebody living on the block, the plans are all new to me. I'm taking them, and people have been having these wonderful visioning sessions for eight years. As somebody living there and having conversations with people, it's all new. So what does that mean to inform people? Maybe it's more than one event advertised on social media, you know, at a, a neighborhood association that's a little removed even from the block, even though we're technically in the Vine neighborhood. So I wanted to offer, um, again, as, you know, as I was speaking to Mr. Bogut, offering my support to be a liaison in the area and, and happy to do anything to, to really help that community and relationship vision come through in a way that I haven't yet seen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience, or do we want to go to the phones?
I will try the phones.
All right, thank you.
There are no calls.
All right, no calls. Um, so unless there is any other comment, we can open it up for further discussion or a motion from, or any other questions, I guess, hearing that?
A move staff recommendation to rezone from LW one to D three.
Okay, so moved?
Seconded.
Seconded? Any discussion? Any, any thoughts on, you'd like to add?
Uh, absolutely applaud the effort. Uh, many of us know firsthand what, uh, risks are involved in this and the difficulty to move the bar forward. Uh, and, uh, the height issues legendary within historic issues, uh, but, uh, and we just heard comments about the visioning process for years and years. It is wonderful to see the intention around the activity. So I'm, yeah, so, so it's not just a matter of the rezoning, but also the spirit of, uh, commitment to the community and the entrepreneurship, along with the risks, so.
Um, I would just say too that the, no matter what the project was going to look like, this area seems to be able to handle the height increase. The similarity of the districts, um, that being sort of the main difference, I think, sets it up well for the transition, and, um, I think um, it'll fit in well. Thanks.
I think this goes, goes nicely with, uh, the neighborhood goals, the city goals, and, uh, the goals of Bronson, which is the major employer of the neighborhood. I think overall, it'll be a nice fit. And, uh, no other, uh, comments or questions for me.
All right.
Um, to echo everyone else, I also think this is a great development. I think this is a great idea. I think this area needs more housing, better uses. Um, as was mentioned, the, the food max that's currently on, um, that corner lot is, uh, this will be a dramatic improvement over that current use. So I, I fully support. Great. Love it.
All right. Um, any other? And I'd like to just add one more. Um, I, you know, I think, I think this is, this really fits in with not just the neighborhood and downtown, but Bronson and the overall city's vision. I think more housing is still needed. I think, you know, we could add another eighty units somewhere else probably, but, and we would still need more housing. So I'm encouraged to see, uh, more housing, especially workforce, or more affordable housing going in near Bronson. You know, not everybody who works at Bronson is a doctor. There's a lot of folks out there who could really use affordable housing. So I'm glad to see it. So I think we can get a roll call then.
Yes.
Yes.
Descenso?
Yes.
Coachava?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tolber?
Yes.
Excellent. I don't know why I turned my mic off after that. All right. Thank you, and thank you to the applicant. Uh, best of luck, and, uh, hope, hope all the process goes well. Thanks for reaching out to the community as well, and hope you can keep that, keep that. Thanks. All right, city planners report.
It has been a while, uh, but I'm here tonight to give you an Imagine Kalamazoo update. Um, at any point in time, you can always ask Commissioner Curtis questions, as he is your representative on the Imagine Kalamazoo Partners Board, um, and did an awesome job facilitating a meeting for us, um, last week. Um, so I'm going to talk to you about, um, just quickly, for maybe those that are watching, just kind of ground us in what Imagine Kalamazoo is. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we heard in the first phase of outreach. Um, we are now in the second phase, so some things that we've heard. Tell you a little bit about the activities we've been doing. Um, it's been an intense six weeks of activities, uh, and a bit of a call to action for anyone who's watching, as well as all of you up on the dais. So, very quickly, especially for our new members, uh, what's Imagine Kalamazoo? Imagine Kalamazoo is what the city calls its community conversation. Um, it started, the first time around, it happened, uh, twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen, uh, and involved about four thousand points of contact, and in relationship to the previous large engagement process to update the master plan, which had four hundred points of contact. So, you know, definitely a change for how we had done things in the past. Imagine Kalamazoo immediately yielded two very critical documents to all the work we do and all the work you do. Uh, the first is the strategic vision. The strategic vision is thirty thousand feet up above the whole city. It is currently ten broad goals uh, that guide our work. Um, whenever staff comes in front of the city commission to request budget, uh, a policy change, a program, we must always tie it back to the strategic vision to make sure that our work is aligning with the goals and the outcomes of that document. The second, uh, primary document that came out of Imagine Kalamazoo ten years ago is the master plan. That is what you all live and breathe as kind of keepers of the master plan. Um, citywide document, about ten thousand feet up, still citywide, focused on land use and transportation, impacts our zoning code, as we've talked about tonight, um, as well as, you know, a number of other activities that staff do for streets, or parks, or housing. So Imagine Kalamazoo is a conversation. We have divided it into three pieces. Uh, the first is Imagine It, which, uh, has concluded, and that was kind of high-level questions, really wanting the community to talk to us about the strategic vision goals that exist now. You know, what do we need to be thinking about changing in those goals to carry us to twenty thirty-five? We did a lot with Happy City, which is a book by Charles Montgomery that we encourage the community read to read. We did a number of presentations and book discussions, and the author was here in January. And so he asked the community to help us, in their words, what makes a happy, healthy city? Is Kalamazoo that city? If not, what do we need to do to get there? We're currently in the second phase, which is Plan It, um, and now we're at the point where we're taking everything we heard from the first six months or so, five months, and turning it back out to the community. Did we hear you right? What else do we need to be thinking about as it relates to goals and outcomes? And then, once this phase is done, the summer, we'll start the Design It phase, which is really the focusing on implementation of those goals and outcomes. And that is really where the master plan really starts to be lifted up. Here's our timeline, and this is our timeline. The master plan technically expires in October of twenty-seven, so we are working a bit ahead of schedule. Uh, but both documents, we consider them to be about ten-year documents. The documents are important, the conversation even more so. And so this timeline can shift. We actually thought Imagine It would end in December. Um, we expanded it for three months because we kept having folks come to the table and want to discuss, um, a, a variety of topics, and so we carried on through with the questions and the activities that we were doing at the time. Uh, when we are done with Plan It phase, um, we will work as a city to draft that strategic vision document, get it out for review, and have it approved by the city commission. As I said before, then we do the Design It meetings, which really are at the neighborhood level, and it's a lot of implementation and measures to making sure that we're making progress. And after that, we'll do the, um, we'll draft the master plan, get it out for public review. That comes to you. According to the state, you are the body, the official body, that gives thumbs up or thumbs down on the master plan. It still goes to city commission, but the plan commission is the body that is the official approver. So numbers do not tell the whole story. Um, these are, uh, but this talks about some of the stuff that we did at least through February, through the Imagine It phase, um, a number of activities, right? And the goal is to reach as many people in the community as possible, and in order to do that, you need as many streams as possible. And so we did traditional big meetings, like our kickoff meeting in September. Um, we did surveys, uh, online, um, and on paper. Um, and we did some things that were new, right? We did the book read, um, and had the author come and present to a number of community organizations. We've done a number of youth art projects, um, to help discuss what Kalamazoo, you think a happy and healthy city looks like. Um, we did pop-up engagements. We've, uh, we had nearly seven hundred responses for meetings on the go, and that number is going to change because we've had a bunch more come in since we did this slide. But meetings on the go is that toolkit that we created, so anyone could go out and have a conversation about the future of Kalamazoo without city staff present, and then easy ways to report that information back to us. So what's some of the stuff that we heard? Um, one of the questions we asked a lot is what's changed for the better in the last ten years, and these are some of the things that we heard. These bubbles, by the way, you can access on imaginekalamazoo.com at the bottom under Stories. It's, um, what we heard in Imagine It. These were put together by Western Michigan University, the Evaluation Lab, um, and if you, they're interactive. So if you click on Infrastructure, which is the number one thing we heard, that's changed for the better, it'll populate all the things that we heard that Western put under that category. So they're neat to kind of play around with. A little slow to load, so be patient. So, what's changed for the better? Uh, infrastructure, uh, education, transportation, housing, and the environment. Not a big surprise that we see some of those things again on this slide, because we know there's still work to be done. So what remains, uh, what are still challenges that we need to overcome as we move Kalamazoo forward? Housing, housing rights, traffic, safety from crime, real or perceived, and infrastructure maintenance. We spent a lot of time asking the question, what makes a city happy and healthy? And these are some of the things that rose to the top. So a happy, healthy community is one that is safe, one that has natural beauty and vitality, and when you click on that link, it talks about the importance of green space, um, and, and the benefits that that provides to the community. A happy, healthy community is one where there's access to basic needs by all residents. Um, it's a tight, close-knit community, uh, and one with, um, where the city has priorities and planning. If any of you did not read Happy City and would like a copy, I have a couple, and I'd be happy to share it with you. It is worth a read. One of the other questions we, one of the questions that we were asking a lot this past fall is what's the role of the community in this work? The strategic vision and the master plan are city documents, but when you think about, uh, what makes the community vision, it is work that is well beyond what's in the city's wheelhouse. And so what is the role of the community in helping us reach that, those, those goals? So, uh, we heard, uh, holding leaders accountable, uh, engaging with the community, accepting small changes as a way to move ourselves forward, um, again, participation and engagement, and ensuring a safe environment. So collectively, these are some of the things that we've heard, and you'll notice in several of these categories, the word "for all." So whenever we heard about transportation, it was, you know, options and accessibility for everyone who is in Kalamazoo or is traveling to Kalamazoo. Housing, affordable and accessible for all. Um, the, uh, having more, um, community and more third spaces. And so if you don't know what a third space is, it's that location between home and work, or home and school, um, where you go to gather with your community, your friends, your family. Uh, we traditionally think about it as a pub, you know, maybe that after-work activity, uh, but third spaces go well beyond that, and obviously not everyone would go to a pub, right? And so making sure that you have a community that is full of these spaces, whether you are twelve, twenty-nine, you know, or, I don't know, fifty-three, right? Because each of those groups have very different needs and very different spaces where they're going to feel like they belong. Um, and creating spaces that are welcoming, belonging, and year-round is something we heard very strongly from the community. These ten goals are our existing strategic vision goals. They're the ones that are in your packets when we say, you know, this case meets the strategic vision goal, complete neighborhood. These nine themes, um, that are in the center of the circle are what we are hearing from the the community for Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. So you will see that these are, these are different. And there's a couple of things that are different. One, we didn't have a housing goal last time. It wasn't something, it kind of wasn't something that rose to the top like it is today. What is, the biggest difference is that strength through diversity and shared prosperity do not, are not listed here. What we heard from the community through Imagine It, what we heard from our Imagine Kalamazoo Partners Board, is that those are very important topics. They should not be standalone goals. They need to be work that we do under everything. And so they need to be very intentionally woven to everything that we do. We've tried to represent that with our circle. So, you know, within these goal, within these which we expect to become goals, at the end of the Plan It phase, diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, a happy, healthy city, and the continuous engagement with our community need to be worked into everything, very intentionally. So that's what we heard. We're now in the Plan It phase. And just to nerd out a little bit, we found when we did the plan the first time around, we were so excited to do the plan and get it done, that some level of, you know, very efficient organization to help us implement it fell to the wayside. And so we really, this time around, are trying to be much more intentional to set up our documents and our work plans. And so we're using the G O S M model, Goals, Outcomes, Strategies, and Measures. We are still, through Plan It, in goals and outcomes. So we are currently still above the line because that is what the strategic vision has in it. Goals, what is the community striving for? Outcomes, what are the impacts of those goals? Those outcomes could be 10-year outcomes, like what we do at the end, what we get at the end of the 10 years, or it could be outcomes that are iterative along the way that help us get there. The third phase of Imagine Kalamazoo will focus on strategies and measures. So that's what we'll start this summer. So what have we been doing in the Plan It phase to really dive into goals and outcomes? There's been a number of, there's three buckets of activity so far, one of which, everything that you see here is replicated online. So you can go to ImagineKalamazoo.com, and you can dive into strategic vision goals, answer questions, think about what they should be for 2035. So that's available online. In person, we've done two sets of activities. So we had five public meetings between March and April. Four of them were in March, and one of them was this week. We were in the Millwood neighborhood, the Northside neighborhood. We had one at Kalamazoo College, the athletic field, so over by Western. We did one at the Kalamazoo Institute of Arts, the KIA. And this week, we are at KNAC at Crawl Space Theater. And at these meetings, they all got a presentation very similar to this. And then participants worked in small groups at tables. Each table had a theme, one of those nine themes in our circle, and they dove in and looked at what the community had said under that theme. What should be prioritized? What should be added? What should be removed? What do we think from this list? And so that work was done, and each table had a facilitator from city staff who helped guide the conversation. At the same time, we also did topic-specific and are doing topic-specific focus groups. So we took each topic, and each meeting focused on one topic. And that allowed us to invite those that work in that topic, that subject, every day, our subject matter experts come to the table, understanding budget, to capacity, and how things happen and move related to that topic, come and do the same exercise that the public's done. And then at the end of the day, what happens is that we're going to marry what we hear from the public and what we heard from the public in the specific topic groups. And that's what, that's where the strategic vision, goals, and outcomes are born. We have had five of our focus groups so far. We have three more, two next week, and one next week. And that is what Commissioner Curtis facilitated, because these focus groups are not run by the city. They are run by our Imagine Kalamazoo partners. And so each meeting has been run by a different partner who facilitates the invited group to go through the questions and the exercises. We expect to have a few more meetings associated with the Plan It phase, or as we, I guess, shift to the Design It phase. And there are three for sure, and we have some more that we want to add to the list but haven't started working on them, so I don't have them listed here. But later this month, we are bringing high school students from Kalamazoo together at Rock, reading right Kalamazoo, to do a discussion on Imagine Kalamazoo. And that will be led by our intern Emerson Whistlehoff, who's a senior at Kalamazoo College and has been our outreach and engagement intern since June. She is also a Loy Norx grad, and so having an opportunity to get back to the community. And she's much younger than I am, so she'll do great leading that meeting with our high school students. We will also be working with the Gun Lake Tribe to set up a meeting sometime in the next few months to give them the opportunity to have an Imagine Kalamazoo discussion with us to help shape our plans. And we're also in early discussions to set up a meeting specifically with Kalamazoo residents with disabilities and their caregivers to help us understand from their perspective in that physical sense, you know, what it's like to move through a community, what do we need to be thinking about to make Kalamazoo more accessible as we move forward. You know, we did a lot of work from the current plans and got a lot of things accomplished. One of the things that I don't think, the needle didn't move as far as we would have liked, is there was a goal to make Kalamazoo the most accessible, friendly city in Kalamazoo, in the, I don't know, in the world, in the, in the, in the country. I don't remember the verbiage. But I don't know that we got there. Certainly there were very positive things that happened, but I think there's more to do and hoping for these type of conversations. We will be looking to have conversations, hopefully, with our unhoused community, with more neighborhoods as we move forward to help move some of these concepts forward to our strategic vision and master plan. So the other activity that's going on is that we are also working on a city vision statement. And we've invited the community. We have little sheets of like fill-in-the-blank paper. We really tried to do a Mad Lib, but it didn't quite work out the way we wanted it to. So you just get a big, big blank box, and you're asked to complete the sentence, "In 2035, all residents..." dot, dot, dot. And while we certainly have some suggested words you might want to use, it is up to anyone who is completing this activity to talk to us about what their vision statement for Kalamazoo would be. This is also available online at ImagineKalamazoo.com. So a call to action. We might be nearing the end of the Plan It phase, although, like I just said, I mentioned three or four meetings that we're trying to, that we haven't started to schedule except for one. So, you know, the firm end of Plan It versus Design It is not really set in stone. Ooh, that is a spelling error. Support. So, your call to action is not that. Your call to action is if you have a community or an organization that would be interested in bringing an Imagine Kalamazoo presentation to that group, let us know. We are happy to come to you, or we can do, you know, a number of groups combined together. But without your voices, the plan is, you know, not going to be quite as strong. You can always go online and complete the activities. You can also go to ImagineKalamazoo.com and sign up to be kept in the loop when new things happen around the, with new meetings and other input opportunities. And soon, this summer, we'll be releasing the strategic vision drafts. You, that would be something you might get an alert on to say, hey, come read it. And we're going to have a meeting to discuss it. So that is where we are with Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. Can I answer any questions about it or the process or what it yields for you?
Yes. First, I appreciate all the hard work you all are putting into this and the various mediums or modes that you're using to reach out to people. I'm just curious if there's any tracking to know whether or not we are reaching every demographic that...
Yep. That's a great question. Every time somebody participates, we send them, they sign into all events, right? And we get email addresses. We have sent out a demographic survey to everyone who has participated. I think we have, I don't know the number, thousands of emails who have gone out. And that is something that we're going to be evaluating this month to see where we are and what we need to do, what areas we need to work harder on to make sure that we're getting that broad representation. But that is how we check. And we send a note with it, right? This may seem like personal questions, but let us tell you why we want this information, right? Without it, it's hard for us to judge if we've done deep enough outreach. So, yeah, absolutely. We sometimes have a sign-in sheet for meetings that says, is this your first time? I don't know that we did that, but I have been to every meeting. It's a lot of meetings. And I kind of see who's there and can be like, oh, repeat customers, that's great. You know, you get to participate at a different topic table. I'm so happy that you're dedicated. The meeting we had this week at Crawl Space Theater was predominantly new people, and it was really lovely. I would say 75% were new that I had not seen at a meeting before. Yes. We can do, as we do more meetings, that is something that we can make sure we add on the sign-in sheet. Is this your first time participating or not? Did you participate online? Certainly. And we just keep, you know, people come to more than one meeting. We have the sign-in sheets for everything. And so we have the massive giant list, which has duplicates in it, and then we have a unique, a unique list.
How exactly do we request a meeting?
Hi, I'm Christina. You can request your meeting with me. Yeah. So, yeah, let me know, and we will set up a time. My email is AndersonC@KalamazooCity.org. You can also reach out to 311, and they will get you in touch with me. You can email hello@KalamazooCity.org, and also get to me as well. And while I might be leading much the engagement, there's a number of staff participating in this work. And we can make it work with our schedule. We can tailor the activities based on if you are, if your group is first-time participants and may want to start back with some of the broader questions, or if the group is ready to dive into, you know, goals and outcomes or strategies and measures, depending on where we are in the process.
Do you rely on the groups that set to find a place, or do they come to you?
We, it can be any of the above. We are happy to organize. If you have a space that you already are meeting with, we will come to you. We are, we, the goal is to make this as easy as possible for those that participate.
All right. Thank you. Seems like a lot of hard work, but it's really appreciated. And thank you to you for being our liaison. All right. We'll open it up for general public comments on any non-agenda items. Not seeing a lot of folks in the audience, but if anyone who is here does want to get up and speak, now's the time. Otherwise, the phone number is 888-382-9556. Again, 888-382-9556.
I think that was me hitting a button.
Okay.
Not a bad call. Nope, there is no one waiting on the call line.
All right. No one on the call line. In that case, we will close the public comment time and go to city commissioner liaison comments. Commissioner Pradel.
Good evening, everyone. I want to echo your thanks to Christina Anderson and the Imagine Kalamazoo staff who've been working on this process. It is incredibly intensive as I'm sure you've seen. A lot of meetings, a lot of planning, and a lot of engaging with residents, which is amazing. And we want to thank the public as well for participating so far in this process as well. Many people on multiple events. Exciting big weekend in Kalamazoo. Kalamazoo Marathon Weekend. We also have the opening of the Kalamazoo Farmers Market. Always a very exciting weekend for my family. We have 150 local growers and makers who will be there. It's going to be open every Saturday from now through the fall, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., so please check it out. Just keep in mind that because of the new multipurpose building that's being constructed through October, there might be a little bit of obstruction more than usual along Bank Street and also where the food trucks are usually parked. So just kind of keep that in mind while you're making your, your trip there. Also, May is Bike Month. So there's two great events that you can participate on May 10th. One of them is the Mayor's Bike Ride with the Kalamazoo and Portage Mayors. So if you can check that out. Also, there's a new event called Bikes in the Zoo on the Kalamazoo Mall with Kalamazoo shops. You can check out that day as well. And then for any kiddos in your life, there's a really fun event that I take my boys to every year called the Bike Rodeo, which is at Mayor's Riverfront Park on May 14th. Lot of fun if you get a chance to go check that out. Wanted to just share also really quickly, we had a first reading of a new ordinance amendment to Chapter 21 in its section on impoundment of vehicles. I'm incredibly excited and proud of this enhancement to our court of ordinances. Number of residents, especially residents on our Northside, have been plagued with a huge quality of life issue with the mobile nuisance parties that have happened at all nights of the hours on the weekends. Young parents with, with babies in their, in their home, people who have jobs where they need to get home or, or leave early in the morning, not to mention that if there were to be an emergency, in some cases, we could not get to their home if there was an emergency. So this ordinance would make it such that they receive a warning if they participate in their vehicles identified. And if they participate multiple times, the city would have a right to impound their vehicle. So anyways, check that out if you have an opportunity as well. But it's one of those issues that it's, it's refreshing that we can see progress for residents who have asked for help for far too long. So anyways, wish you all a great month ahead and enjoy the weekend.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Any planning, Commissioner comments? Don't forget to turn your mics on if you do. Yes, no. All right. No planning, Commissioner comments? All right. With that, we are adjourned at 8:06.